Record. Ready to go.
All right. It is seven o'clock and it is Tuesday, February fourteenth. I'd like to call the meeting of the planning board to order, please. Karen, could you call the roll?
Bob Doherty.
Here.
Jim Callahan.
Here.
Kevin Donovan.
Yeah.
Dave Edmonds is absent. Carolyn Turner.
Here.
Here.
Mike Fentresker is absent. And Chair Claudia Bulgen.
Here. All right, our first item on the agenda is a public hearing on Baker Way. And there is somebody in the audience that does not have their mute on if whoever, I believe. I think maybe it's gotten taken care of. If someone. Yeah. Sadie and Abby. Okay. Are we good?
If you could mute your microphone, that would be great. Perfect.
Great, perfect, thank you. So first item on the agenda is Baker Way expiration of construction completion date.
Uh, well, yes, it's actually a public hearing on a request to modify the approved subdivision plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right over that thinking it was the same. So let me call that again correctly. Under public hearings, we have Baker Way subdivision request to modify approved plan and the applicant is David Baker.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chairman and Attorney Salvati is in the audience. Going to give you Attorney Salvati the option. I'm happy to recap to tell how we got to where we are this evening, or you're welcome to do it.
Oh, still free, Tina, go ahead.
Very good. So last July, uh, the applicant was before us to request a very similar modification for a different section of curbing, uh, that had been removed by an abutter, uh, without the developer's knowledge. And the board considered that, uh, modification and granted it. But between the time that hearing was requested and the time it was actually held, the abutter also in and then removed another section of curbing. So back last July, we recognized that we were going to need to consider some resolution of that additional curbing issue. And the applicant has decided to pursue a further modification to authorize the, I guess, the replacement of what was straight face granite curbing with what is sloped, uh, concrete, uh, bituminous curbing. Um, that request is now before the board as a modification and subject to a hearing if there are any residents in the area. I have not had any feedback or any comments from any abutters to this request.
All right. Um, Attorney Salvati, do you have anything to add before I open it up? Uh, it is a public hearing.
I don't, other than the fact that, uh, again, you know, David just, uh, he put in this subdivision and the, uh, the neighbor kind of did what he wanted to do, but I don't think it really hurts anything. It doesn't really affect the plowing or, um, the maintenance of that roadway. So I don't think it's a, it's a big issue. Um, obviously you shouldn't have done it, but, uh, we're hoping that the board will see fit to approve it the way it is and we can, we can just move on. So that's all I have to add.
Okay, Attorney Salvati, thank you. Um, this is a public hearing. Um, I would like to invite anyone here who wishes to speak either in favor or opposed to the request to modify the approved Baker Way definitive subdivision plan to, um, use the raise hand function with Tina will now explain.
If you would like to have the board recognize you for comments, please hover your cursor over the bottom of your screen. There's a more button. If you click on that, you'll see an option for reactions and you'll have the option to raise your hand, click on that hand and we'll be able to tell that you would like to address the board. Um, Madam Chairman, I've gone through the audience and I see nobody with their hand raised.
All right, um, are there any board members with questions or comments before I ask the planning board director for her recommendation? Jim, go right ahead.
Yes, I'd like to see what's being modified. And to what extent the butter is going on to the developer's property and taking out curbing, how that's allowed.
Um, let me check, I believe. I want to check because I believe there was a graphic that was included with the request that showed the extent of additional curbing that was being removed. Am I correct, Mr. Salvati?
That is correct. I believe that it, uh, it starts at about 10 feet in on Baker Way on the right and he, uh, you had originally approved a portion of it from about 25 feet in up to, up to the end of the road. And he did a little bit more of it, uh, between the, maybe the 10 foot and 25 foot point, but you should have a plan that shows the as-built, uh, and exactly what he did modify.
Do have the drawing. And, uh, not seeing anything that's delineating the proposed change. Or the original change is granted.
Uh, if you look at the ASB plan, and this is, I'm sorry, it's not a graphic that I had prepared to post this evening. But we did provide to the planning board members a copy of the ASB plan. And I'm sorry for not having called this out clearly for you perhaps than what is shown here in notes. At the very beginning of the roadway on the southerly side, there's a notation that says VGC. And that stands for vertical granite curbing. And it starts right at Washington Street and it runs up, uh, I'm going to say maybe forty-five, fifty feet. And then you see a notation that says, uh, BCB. And my understanding is that that stands for the bituminous concrete curbing that they installed as opposed alternatively.
And where are the property lines in relationship to the edge of roadway?
So this is a little bit strange. This is a place where the Baker Way right of way, uh, you'll see it labeled as formerly Cedar Street is actually straight through, uh, from Washington Street. Uh, the rights of way don't have any radii there, uh, straight lines. That is technically the old Baker Way formerly Cedar Street right of way. The new subdivision road added a portion to that right of way on the north. The curved part, which was the radius and has the sidewalk next to it. What's interesting in this case is that the traveled way follows some of that new portion and a large part of the old Baker Way right of way, but not all of it. The curbing that we just identified is actually within the Baker Way right of way, the former Cedar Street right of way.
And that right away is, correct me if I'm wrong, part of this development in all the changes that were previously approved and the ones that are in front of the board this evening are clearly not within the abut, the budding property or by coolest on their land.
Right, there may be, I see what your point is that there may be.
There's a property line, it's clear as day. It's not even close at its narrowest tangent point that they're looking for now, but up by Washington Street, it's about, my guess, twenty plus feet.
The abutter may well have, and I believe does have some encroachments into the Baker Way slash former, uh, Cedar Street right of way. But that roadway is not a public way, it's a private way. So while there may be encroachments, uh, I think it's a matter between parties, uh, that don't involve the city if there are issues with those encroachments. But I think you're absolutely right to identify them. There are some improvements the abutter seems to have done that are outside of his property line and within the right of way.
Correct. When the private entity being Mr. Baker develops this one last subdivision, after the city accepted as a private way, then he can do what he'd like, but the plans are in front of us that have been approved. Does not allow him to make changes and make deals with the abutters until it's accepted.
He did not. I just want to be clear and Mark, please back me, my understanding is he made no such deal. He did not even know that the abutter had taken the curbing out. The abutter did not speak to him before removing the curbing. I believe Mr. Baker found out about it only well after the fact and by surprise. Am I correct, Attorney Salvati?
That is correct. There, there was no deal between the parties and Mr. Coolus did it all on his own. What we're asking this board to do is to approve those changes, which we think don't really affect that right of way. Uh, but it is a private way, so it's not something that the city has to deal with as far as plowing and everything else, but, uh, we did not, we did not make a deal and, and allow him to do this. He did it. We're coming back to you to ask for the approval of it, uh, based on his actions. So it's not, it's not something Mr. Baker did, I want it done.
And where is his encroachment? What is his encroachment onto the roadway that prevents you from putting in vertical granite curbing versus slope cave cob bituminous?
He, he did install vertical granite curbing, Jim. Uh, Mr. Baker didn't.
It's been removed.
Correct, I understand that. So whether he put it in, some veil vandalizes, stole it, whatever, his obligation to us is to have the granite curbing. So because a neighbor did this on his own, why are we taking an inferior product? And if so, what's the benefit to us? And what's the valuation that we should, we should receive for credit?
I, I don't think there's any benefit, but I don't think there's any detriment either. I leave it to the board, but I don't see how you can penalize Mr. Baker, uh, for putting in curbing that was removed by another and then having to reinstall it.
Like you said at the beginning, it sounds like a civil matter, right?
Yeah.
We just had, we just had a development. And I believe they're actually coming up tonight where someone had an existing encroachment into this, the right of way, even though it was public. We had to have it removed in order to do the development that the applicant was entitled to. By allowing such actions to take place, we put ourselves in a, a situation of precedent, which has recently been thrown up to our faces on some other relief being given to other applicants. I, I don't feel comfortable with it, be honest with you. As minor as it is.
I, I have to say that I think there's a huge difference between a public and a private uh, way in, in this particular circumstance, but I leave it to the board on that.
I'm all set.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any other board members with any other questions or comments before I open it up to the public? All right, seeing none. Uh, this is a public hearing, so if there is anybody who wishes to speak, um, please let us know by using the raise hand function. And at this point, since this is the second time I've called, if I don't see anybody, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Anybody, Tina?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, motion by Carolyn, second by, is it Bob?
Yeah.
All right, uh, Tina, can you call the roll? I, I have a suspicion Tina might be frozen.
I think so.
Okay.
Um, Bob Doherty.
Hi.
Jim Callahan.
Hi.
Kevin Donovan.
Bye.
Carolyn Turner.
Hi.
Chair Claudia Bulgen.
Hi, um, five in favor and none opposed, that motion, uh, carries. So the next thing I would do is ask, um, the planning board director if she has a recommendation. Um, so that is unfortunate that we cannot see her anymore, and I do wonder whether she can hear us.
Uh, looks like she's muted.
Let's see, is there any way I can unmute her?
I, I asked her to unmute. Whoop, there she is.
Hi.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry.
No worries. We have closed the public hearing. We had a vote to close the public hearing, so the next item was to, um, ask you whether you had a recommendation.
Thank you, and I apologize for that. I do, I would actually recommend that the board grant the requested modification.
All right. All right, what is the will of the board? Is there any further discussion or would someone like to make a motion?
Like, make a motion to accept the director's recommendation.
All right, a motion by Bob to accept the planning board, uh, director's recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kevin, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a roll call vote, please. Karen, thank you.
Bob Doherty.
Hi.
Jim Callahan.
Hi.
Kevin Donovan.
Hi.
Carolyn Turner.
Hi.
Chair Claudia Bulgen.
I, that is, uh, five in favor, none opposed, that motion carries to grant the requested modification. All right, my understanding is that this, there is another agenda item under subdivisions, expiration of construction completion date. Is that right, Tina?
That's correct. Um, there were a couple of outstanding items beside resolution of this curbing matter. And that was the submission, uh, of an acceptable ASB plan and a, uh, letter from the design engineer certifying that improvements were in fact done at least in substantial conformance with the approved plan. Uh, those two items were actually taken care of since we last saw the developer in July. What remains outstanding as an issue at the moment is the resolution of some complaints the board received, uh, in written form from some abutters at the last meeting. There was a requirement that a trench that was across Washington Street be repaired. And, uh, initially the DPW thought that utility company would be coming in in short order to do a project such that they originally indicated that Mr. Baker wouldn't have to go back and repair that trench because in fact it would be fixed as part of the larger project. It turns out that that utility project has been delayed and delayed and delayed. Uh, and now looks the last I checked with, um, Mr. Duran, it was at least another year from now before that project might start. So, uh, in July, the issue was the developer needing to get in touch with, uh, Mr. Duran, figure out what if any repair he was going to require, um, between now and the utility job and then actually getting that work done. That item remains outstanding.
All right, um, Attorney Salvati, do you have some wisdom for us with respect to that item?
Is he still? Is he dropped, is he dropped out of the meeting?
Hmm, I think he did.
Um.
What do you want me to call him?
Could you do that, Karen? Could we lay this matter perhaps on the table?
Yes. That would be fine.
Karen, thank you.
Why don't we lay this matter on the table? Because if the applicant's attorney was here and is now not here, we cannot, uh, you know, in good faith and conscience go forward until we ascertain the reason for that.
Correct.
All right, all right. So, uh, we'll lay that matter on the table. So next, under subdivisions is High View Estates, expiration of construction completion date, the applicant is Sanco Builders and Mike Santulo.
I guess just to summarize quickly, uh, the developer and his attorney are here tonight. I thank them both for attending. Uh, we last saw, uh, and received an update on this project in, uh, I guess it was September of 2022. And at that point, we extended the completion date till the end of January. Um, I think in the hope that a settlement agreement would be formally reached. A written communication has been provided to the board for tonight's meeting, but the developer and his attorney are here this evening to give you an update in person, such as so to speak.
All right, um, Attorney Jane, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, so I, um, am happy to report, we have provided a draft settlement agreement to Eversource and we are waiting for their comments and or revisions to the same. Um, so we expect that that's going to be finalized, um, by the end of the first week of March. Um, and that's the deadline the court has given us to finalize it, so I expect it will. Um, and so we're requesting, um, to have a further extension to May first and further update the board then to confirm that the, um, the settlement agreement is complete. And, um, then I'd be, if, you know, if we finalize a settlement agreement the first week of March, which I expect we will, I will be happy to provide a written update, um, to the court at that time.
Okay, and can you give us a sense, Attorney Jane, that if everything actually works to, um, end this years-long litigation the first week in March, what would be the next steps in this project?
Um, I think I will allow, um, Mr. Santulo to, um, address the, um, you know, the next steps in the project.
Mr. Santulo, welcome.
Okay, thank you. How you doing? Um, my next steps would be, you know, with a, um, settlement agreement with Eversource, you know, at that time I will be, you know, reopening, um, you know, the, the planning with, you know, the couple of site work contractors and main drilling and blasting and coming up with a plan. And, you know, based on, you know, their schedules and, you know, pricing and all that, you know, go back to the bank that I previously had for financing back in sixteen and try to reopen everything back up. Uh, also, um, you know, I am kind, kind of currently knee deep in about four projects. Um, so I would have to finish up a few things before I would start a big project like that. So my goal is obviously put this litigation behind us and have a settlement agreement, so I know that we can go to work and, um, start, start major planning from there.
Okay, so that, uh, that is the information in, in front of us at this moment. Before I go further with this, are there any board members that have questions for either Attorney Jane or, um, Mr. Santulo?
Oh, yeah.
Jim, go right ahead.
Yeah, so based upon, you know, an early March settlement and you're looking for a May first, uh, completion date, would we be able to receive an updated, uh, proposed schedule by that, uh, May first timeline? Um, is that reasonable to expect?
I, I mean, I think, I, yeah, I, I think I can speak to that. I just want to give a little bit of context to what Mr. Santulo said uh, because of the, the ongoing litigation and the, you know, somewhat in indefinite timeline in terms of when it was going to resolve. I mean, he has had to obviously continue to operate his business and invest himself in other projects, not knowing exactly when he would be able to start this one. I think we will, you know, be in a position and given that changing economic conditions and, you know, including the interest rate environment, um, to give, you know, to give an update in terms of what his projected dates are on, on May first, um, as best we can. And, you know, and we're more than happy to do that.
Understood, thank you.
All right, Tim, are you set?
Yes, I am.
All right. Um, Tina, do you have anything at this point in time?
So I wanted to note, uh, that earlier today, I received an email which I forwarded to all the board members uh, from City Council Chuck Viola, who represents this neighborhood. Uh, he and I spoke earlier today by phone and I had actually recommended to him that he write that email because I wasn't sure what the board policy might be, uh, in terms of having him address the board. As it turns out, uh, Counsel Viola, I did check with, um, uh, Chair Claudia Bulgen, and I think the board would be more than happy if you would like to address them directly uh, and tell them what was in your email, you're welcome to do so. Otherwise, I would characterize it certainly generally as an email that expressed concern about in some respects, this city's ability to actually support these additional houses. And then also to register concern about granting any additional, um, extensions of time. So Counsel Viola, if you would like to address the board, I think you could certainly unmute yourself and, and speak. Otherwise, I did provide a copy of that email and, uh, they are aware of your comments. And I don't see the unmute, so I'm going to say that, uh, Counsel Viola must have been satisfied with my summary.
Okay, all right, and, and just for, um, uh, further, further reference, if there are, um, members of, uh, the city council or any other board members of the city that wish to come before us and speak on any matter, whether it's a public hearing or not, as a matter of courtesy, it would be my, um, my intention to allow that. So I just wanted to be clear for the board and for the public, like that is where I would be with that issue, even if it wasn't a public hearing, so. In any event, so, um, all right, uh.
Excuse me, Claudia, through the chair.
Sure.
Um, I have a question. It says that looking for an extension of the construction completion date to May first, 2023. Um, and Ms. Santulo said that he's got a bunch of other projects going, so chances are he's not going to get to this one very quickly. What? What would be completed by May first, 2023?
Certainly, well, I mean, one, the settlement agreement with Eversource, which has been the, you know, resolving that litigation has been the elephant in the room. And, and second, we, we will, to the best of our ability, provide updated project, uh, completion deadlines um, to the board at that time.
But it will, but there's no.
He's not going to be able, yeah.
It's no way it's going to be done by May first.
No, what, I mean, it's sort of in line with the way that the board has, has granted these sort of shorter extensions of time so that we can provide further updates on the project. That was, that was our thinking in terms of asking for this brief extension of time to May first. So that we can finalize a settlement agreement, provide the board with an update where, as to where we are at that time.
And then at that point on May first, you actually may be in here with a realistic completion date.
Yes, that's our.
Bringing you back in a month later and finding out where you are, um. Would that be possible, that by May first, you would be in here with a, an actual completion date or?
Um, I think, uh, I will defer to Mr. Santulo to give his perspective on that.
Uh, yes, with, with, with a, um, settlement, settlement, settlement agreement, I will actively pursue, re-pursue, uh, all my site work contractors and financial institutes and all that and, and figure out, you know, the plan of attack. So that'll, my, my plan will be to come in here in May first and give you an idea of where, where, um, we're at.
Okay.
Um, I see that Counsel Viola, um, had left the meeting and come, came back, and I just wanted to be sure that he was aware that if he had wanted to, um, speak on this matter, even though it wasn't a public hearing, he is, he is welcome to do that. Tina did share with us his email and share with us, um, in this meeting, a general summary of his concerns, so. When, whenever I see, uh, uh, someone leaving and coming, I want to be sure that they didn't miss anything important, so that's what I say. Um, so, um, so Bob, with respect to that, what I heard, uh, oh, Counsel, Counsel Viola, if, I see, I see you have unmuted. You are, you are welcome to address the board if you would like.
Well, thank you very much. Sorry, I, um, froze for some instance, I don't know why. But, um, I want to thank you for taking the time to hear from me tonight. Um, thank you to the applicant for being here as well. Um, just a couple of the issues that I have, uh, going forward, as we previously talked about the SWIP, um, which previously there were issues with, um, erosion on the property causing trees to fall. Um, that's another safety concern. Um, the infrastructure in the area, the streets are deplorable in the side of the, in this neighborhood, uh, so to speak, and I don't know if these large trucks coming back in here will deteriorate them all, causing more, uh, issues on the roads and causing safety concerns for the residents. And then other concerns I have is whether or not we'll have to install a, uh, pumping station to pump the water at the elevation going up into this development. And then coming out of the development, the sewage, we got to make sure that the, the infrastructure that's in place, which is aging, will be able to handle the sewage leaving as well. Thank you.
Counsel Viola, thank you. Um, Tina, with respect to that, what I think is clear about this subdivision is that it is, um, it has quite a history between the city, um, this board in particular, you know, various and sundry city officials. Um, it's quite. It's quite, it's quite the situation that we find ourselves in now with a subdivision that was designed in what, the nineteen seventies, Tina? And is now coming back to roost, so to speak. So I think what I heard Counsel Viola, you know, his concerns are, well, given that the subdivision, the, the developer has right to build the subdivision, there's already been litigation on that. To what extent do we need to involve other parts of the city to make sure that as construction commences, if indeed it starts soon? Because the litigation is, is, is resolved, to what extent do we need to sort of marshal the city's resources to make sure that this is done in a safe manner?
Well, as you were speaking, I was starting to write down the words pre-construction meeting. And, you know, some of the issues that Counsel Viola raised would theoretically have been vetted and discussed back at the time that the subdivision was under consideration. Things like the capacity of utilities now. Has something changed in the intervening years? I don't know. And I also don't know the extent to which a change would be something, certainly something that needed to be addressed. But as to which party would be responsible for doing that, I think is, is remains unanswered for me at the moment. Back to the issue of a pre-construction meeting. I'll ask if you wouldn't mind, the developer, whether there's any requirement that you have in your conservation commission permitting? Do you have any requirement that you must have a pre-construction meeting before recommencing work up there?
There is no
No concom?
No, there's no concom, no order conditions. But I, I mean, in other towns, you know, particularly Stonham, which is the last time I've done three subdivisions, all with ledge. We've, we've had pre-construction meetings, you know, before workers to commence the, I mean, that's, that's pretty standard practice.
It might be a great idea. Just because, you know, there's gonna be a lot of interaction. There are connections, obviously, with existing utilities. There's been some inactivity for a while. It might be good for all of the city departments to know, for instance, the details of what you're planning for construction and when, and those kinds of things. So although right now, I'm not sure that there's any requirement anywhere for such a meeting. It would be great if the developer would agree to attend a meeting like that with, you know, we'll set it for a time when he and his engineer and other representatives can attend. So, and we'll get all of the city departments together, like the building department, police, fire, engineering, DPW, get everybody together, perhaps even in a virtual meeting. And it allows everybody to answer questions and get some answers and figure things out and hopefully address issues, you know, before construction starts.
I, I, I agree. I think that absolutely has to happen.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Santulo. That we really appreciate that. I mean, as, as I said, the subdivision has a very long and messy history in our city. And if it's going to be built, I think it's in everyone's interest to make sure that it's built safely. So, so we really do appreciate, you know, the willingness, even though there's no requirement in place for something like a pre-construction meeting, you know, to address the concerns of the city council and, and the neighbors, just for a safe development. So thank you.
Yeah, at the end of the day, we all, we all want it to be right. So that's, that's always the goal.
Yeah, and right, and, and, and safe for everyone, for sure. That's, that's what we do as a planning board is, you know, the ultimate, that's our ultimate charge is for the safety and convenience of the residents of the city of Wilbur. And that's what it says in our, in our mandate. So with that said, Tina, how shall we go? I, I, I don't see anybody else that unless any of the board members have anything else to say, I guess at this point, we are, we are looking for a recommendation.
And my guess, my recommendation would be that we grant the extension of the construction completion date for the Hy-Vee subdivision to May first two thousand twenty-three.
Okay. And then we had discussed by, by that time that perhaps the developer, assuming all goes well and that your settlement agreement is reached, that we would see you maybe the meeting prior to May first. Whatever that meeting is with the information, assuming all has gone well, that either all has not gone well, right? And, and we're having a different conversation or that all has gone well, and this is our timeline. Like this is what you are expecting, you know, to have happen after the settlement and the litigation has, has gone has finished. What would be the meeting prior to May first?
It's the fourth Tuesday in April. Do anybody have a calendar close?
April twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Karen.
All right. So we have an April twenty-fifth. So if if the planning board director's recommendation was part of a motion, perhaps that motion would also encompass that we would be expecting to see the developer and his attorney on our April twenty-fifth meeting with information about a timeline for completion of the subdivision, assuming the litigation has settled the way the applicant and his attorney hopes. So if anyone would like to make a motion, I'd welcome it.
I will make a motion to accept the director's recommendation with the added features.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Carolyn, and those added features would be that the matter would be placed on the agenda for the April twenty-fifth meeting for a, a more fulsome update by the developer and his attorney as to if the litigation has settled, then we would be looking for a fairly detailed timeline of what we could expect for the next enlargement, the next extension, which would, we would anticipate being the one which would be to the completion of the subdivision at this point in time. So a motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Bob Doherty?
Aye.
Jim Callahan?
Aye.
Kevin Donovan?
Aye.
Carolyn Turner?
Aye.
Chair Claudia Bulgen.
Aye, that's five in favor, none opposed. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right, next on the agenda under subdivisions is Allen R. Garrish Drive, expiration of construction completion date. Oh, wait, do we have Mark Salvati?
Incredibly, he seems to have disappeared again.
His, his phone died, and he asked if he could have an extension to the next meeting. He did log in twice, and then he texted me and he said that he could, could he have a request to continue? His phone is, has died.
All right. So the subdivision review portion of Baker Way. We can put that on our next meeting, unless Tina, you have another option.
Nope, I think next meeting is the most appropriate thing.
And that is what date?
Well, that's to be discussed under your next, under, toward the end of the meeting, we were planning to speak about this. Your next meeting is scheduled for February twenty-eighth. But at the moment, we don't have any items of business that will come before the board that night. So you could continue this matter to the twenty-eighth, but right now it may, it may very well end up being the only item on the agenda. Alternatively, you could table discussion to March fourteenth, for which I know there will be a meeting because we have a public hearing to schedule.
And then we can decide whether that meeting is via Zoom or, or here. So what is, what is the will of the board with respect to the outstanding matter on Baker Way?
Wish it to March fourteenth.
All right. So I'll take that in the form of a motion, Bob. Motion to place the Baker Way subdivision matter on the table until our meeting on March fourteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Bob Doherty?
Aye.
Jim Callahan?
Aye.
Kevin Donovan?
Aye.
Alan Turner?
Aye.
Chair Claudia Bulgen.
Aye, that's five in favor, none opposed. That motion carries. All right, last under subdivisions is the Allen R. Garrish Drive expiration of construction completion date, cattle crossing LLC is the petitioner.
Yes, Madam Chairman, and I'm not sure, the developer may be here tonight under a different name. But if he is not, let me give you a brief update. I have a little progress to report. You recall that the one outstanding matter here was the installation of an additional street light or a street light fixture somewhere in the subdivision on one of perhaps two existing poles that were in the Pearl Street right-of-way. This was necessitated by the fact that when the project was constructed, it was discovered at the end as completion was nearing that they had neglected to put in a streetlight stanchion at the end of the cul-de-sac. The board considered the matter to decide whether or not they could waive the requirement. And it was felt that there was in fact additional illumination needed on the road. Putting up an additional light fixture on one of the existing poles, it's hoped that that will provide enough light to make it adequate for the board to accept. I'm happy to report that the light has been installed, but it needs to be tested, perhaps tweaked. I want to make sure that it shines in the right direction and that it provides the illumination that's needed. And we haven't had a chance to do that because the fixture was just installed earlier today. So we will, in fact, I was going to suggest to the board that they continue and lay this matter on the table until the next board meeting, which and in fact, I might modify that and say March fourteenth to make it a date certain. And by then we should be able to have done testing, any tweaking that's needed. And I would love to be in a position to tell you at that point that the developer is able to ask for a final release so we can take final, you know, releases on the subdivision and declare it complete. So in the end, my request is to lay this matter on the table. Happy to answer any questions in the meantime. Otherwise, if we could lay it on the table to mid-March on the fourteenth, that would be my recommendation.
So moved.
All right, motion by Bob to table this matter until our March fourteenth meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Bob Doherty?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Kevin Donovan?
Aye.
Carolyn Turner?
Aye.
Chair Claudia Bulgen?
Aye, that's five in favor, none opposed. That motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is Planning Board Director update. Tina?
So as I alluded to a minute ago, we have a meeting scheduled right now for February twenty-eighth, although there are no agenda items. My thought was to suggest that we leave it there, and if it turns out no business develops, we could always cancel the meeting officially, maybe four or five days in advance. If we did that, then the next meeting would be on March fourteenth. There will be a public hearing that night on a four-lot subdivision that's been submitted to the board for property on Poole Street. And we will also have perhaps both Baker Way and Jericho Place on that agenda as well. One thing, one thing we do need to decide is whether or not that meeting on March fourteenth will be in person or a virtual one.
All right. So there's essentially two items up for discussion. The first item is whether to cancel the February twenty-eighth meeting tonight or whether to leave it in place as a placeholder and cancel it up until, what, what's our drop dead for cancellation of a meeting?
I would say the drop dead, to be fair, would be at least forty-eight hours, but I would endeavor to do it and at least double that, something like, you know, maybe the previous Thursday.
Okay. And with respect to the reason why we should keep it as a placeholder meeting, is there like, I mean, is there an issue of an A and R plan or something with a short deadline that couldn't wait until the fourteenth? You know, I guess I'm just trying to, you know, if, if there's a reason to keep that in our schedules as a, as a maybe, then I'm, I'm happy to entertain that. But if there is, you know, if there's not a particular reason to just go ahead and, 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 and have a firm March fourteenth date for our next meeting, you know, I just want to give the full flavor of that for board members to decide.
Fair, fair, very fair. So I cannot, I do not know of anything that may come up. I don't even know of something that possibly may come to you that I happen to hear about informally or, you know, not quite formed. A and Rs would not be a reason to leave it open because of course the board has been authorized, has authorized the chair and the vice chair to endorse A and R plans while we're still meeting virtually. So no, a short answer or the long answer to your question is there's nothing that I can tell you would really recommend that we leave it open as a possibility. I think you could cancel that meeting without any penalty and anything that did come in between now and then, we'd be well within any timelines to get it on the agenda for March fourteenth.
All right. What is the will of the board on that issue?
I'd love to make a motion to cancel the February twenty-eighth meeting.
Do we, do we need to make a motion, Tina, or just decide?
I think you can decide and we'll, we'll just mark it down with the city clerk's office tomorrow. Thank you for the guidance.
All right, Carolyn and, and Kevin? What, what Bob said? I, I see a thumbs up from Tim. So, okay. So, so, so rather than just have that be open, we're just, our next meeting is March fourteen. And so now the question is virtual or in person? What's the will of the board?
I prefer in person, but
Okay, Carolyn or Jim or Kevin, any thoughts?
I'll say in person. Where it's a public meeting as well.
I'll say in person also.
All right. Yeah, we're, we're, it's a public hearing, and we haven't had an in-person meeting in a while. I think it makes sense to make it an in-person meeting. So why don't we advertise that as an in-person meeting on March fourteenth? And then at that point, we won't have to deal with phones dying or internet freezing or whatever and, and try to get some of these items done. Okay. Great. So any, anything else on the Planning Board Director update that I did that we haven't covered?
Just two quick things. Excuse me, wanted to let you know and, and just mention that we have in fact submitted a draft open space and recreation plan to the state for review. It's still under review. The same person that reviews these documents also has multiple applications in for grants. So may take a little while to get the feedback, but when we do, I'll be working with the engineering department and the recreation department and commission to make whatever edits are required along with the conservation commission. And then eventually you will see later this spring, I hope, a final draft plan that I will present to you formally and ask you to review and formally adopt on the city's behalf. The laws about open space or the rules for open space and rec plans do require that the local planning boards review and approve them. You did that the last time, and we'll need to do that again for this plan, which will last for five, seven years, excuse me. So Lastly, under update, I just wanted to let you know, I also provided you with a copy of a letter that the mayor submitted to the city council along with an action plan. You remember, we've had some brief conversations about the MBTA Communities Act that was actually our so-called act that was adopted back in two thousand twenty-one. Time does fly. And the city, the mayor and I had originally spoke with the city council about the council's view on whether or not the city should try to pursue compliance with that law. Compliance was going to require some changes to zoning that would allow at the time thirty-three hundred plus units in the city by right in very specific areas around the train stations. And the council's opinion at that time was that with the rules and, and the regulations as they were then, but it was not something that they would like to pursue. A lot, a number of things have changed in the intervening year. And at the end of January, there was a deadline by which the city could submit a so-called action plan, which is a very brief summary of the current zoning situation. Fairly rough estimate of the issues that stand in the way of compliance right now between what the city has for zoning and what would be required for changes. And then lays out a timeline to work with, create and work with a committee to perhaps look at alternatives and see if there are in fact any configurations of any districts that the city council would find palatable for Wilbur. The only way to know whether there is in fact some district that could be created that would meet the requirements and not overburden the city and the opinion of the city council. The only way to get that is to actually do the research with the revised regulations and some of the compliance tools that are now available through the revised regulations and some of the compliance tools that are now available through the state. So uh, we filed that plan, and the rough estimate is that we would create a committee and spend a number of months trying to figure out not only what uh the areas would need to be or conceivable areas that could comply with zoning, but then to think about what the text would have to look like and what um they would need to say. And then vet that through some public processes and then eventually submit it to the city council and the planning board as a formal zoning amendment to consider approving or not. So it's a long process that would run from about now through, I think, October of two thousand twenty-four is what I estimated. It would take us all in to be able to do all that in Woburn and actually get, you know, enough time for the city council to consider and vote on it. So um, I I've talked to the mayor a little bit. He's supportive of the idea of a committee, which we've not completely named yet. I've thought of a couple of folks like certainly our city solicitor and our building inspector who wants to be involved as well from the ground up. Uh, myself would, uh, I would also be involved. And I I would like to consider, and and I'm not looking for an answer this evening, but I think this is the kind of uh uh heavy duty topic that doesn't come up very often in the city. It it could stand to create some significant changes, good and bad for the city. I think it's got a lot of importance. For that reason, I'd love the planning board to consider appointing a representative of it to this committee. And I'm also going to ask perhaps um the mayor is agreeable to have the city council name one of its own uh to be maybe one of the counselors at large uh would make a good candidate for this committee. I don't know if the chair, the vice chair, or some other member of the planning board, but I'd like to have both boards at least in the discussions and hearing what the um material is and understanding some of the decisions and options that are available. I think it can only serve to make a better product in the end. So I'm going to come back to you at a subsequent meeting, maybe on the fourteenth. Uh, and I'll I'll speak with you or we'll talk at that meeting about whether or not there is a a candidate from the planning board that would be willing to serve on this committee for a period of time. So um, I wanted to let you know that's out there, and I'm happy to answer any questions at that meeting or before that, if any of you want to email me or call me, I'm happy to talk about it anytime.
All right, well, we'll be looking for volunteers.
Right, thank you. I'm done.
Okay. All right, next under uh on the agenda is approval of minutes for the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Those were circulated. Does anyone have any comments on those minutes? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three planning board meeting minutes.
All right, motion by Bob to accept the minutes as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Bob Doherty.
Hi.
Ian.
Hi.
Kevin Donovan.
Hi.
Carolyn Turner.
Hi.
Yeah, Claudia Bogan.
Hi, that's five in favor, none opposed. That motion passes. Is there any other business matters that may legally come before the board not known at the time of posting, Tina?
Not from staff.
All right, then, at this point, unless there's anybody else with anything, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn the February fourteenth planning board meeting at approximately seven fifty-four.
Excellent, Bob. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Bob Doherty.
Hi.
Jim Callahan.
Hi.
Kevin Donovan.
Hi.
Carolyn Turner.
Hi.
Yeah, Claudia Bogan.
Hi, five in favor, none opposed. That motion carries. The meeting stands adjourned. We will see each other in person on March fourteenth? Yes, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you very much. Tina?
Good night.
Thank you.
Where you guys go? Is it okay if I um have the recording sent to me? I'm a UMass student, and I'm trying to write a research paper on uh a board meeting?
Sure. Well, I'll tell you what, it it shouldn't be just on YouTube.
Oh, it will be.
Well, it it should be, but if it isn't, why don't I, while I have you here, why don't I get your email? Uh, or I'll tell you what, Sean, could you contact me by email in the morning? Did you find me on on the uh on the website in the planning department?
Okay, I could do that.
Unless you want to give it to me over the air, I'm happy to take it now and email it.
Yeah, you can take it over the air.
Sure, give it to me.
So it's oh, actually, I'll just email you. That's fine.
Very good.
All right, Sean, good luck with your project.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you.